This is going to be the open mic, so that you can contribute to this discussion, or ask questions, or clarification on anything that has been presented here.
Alright, testing. My name is Mario Lara. I'm a Belizean by birth, living in the United States. And just for the record, I would go on the record to say I'm against going to the ICJ. So you were kind of preaching to the choir with me. But I do appreciate you for organizing this somehow. I think I appreciate the information that you brought. I have several questions actually, so forgive me. I don't need to talk to my secretary. My first question is for Patrick Rogers. And I listened to if the compromise has to be ratified by the Senate, can a case be brought against the government of Belize to force them to take it to the Senate? Or if they go ahead with their referendum, can a case be brought for an injunction until such time that they take the compromise to the Senate? That's my first question.
Guatemala took this thing to their Constitutional Committee immediately after it was signed. The Constitutional Committee said, yeah, it doesn't go against the Constitution. So they rushed it over to their Congress and made it law. Because they realized they had the best deal they could have hoped for negotiated in this document. Belize on the other hand, as I said, they must. And yes, we can challenge them, but the BPP don't have any lawyer that works pro bono for us. We're not like the PUP. As a matter of fact, OJ Ellington, who he was representing the International Bomb Crisis Commission, when Ambassador Leslie couldn't face us after telling us it was ratified. And we checked and found it wasn't ratified. At the subsequent BNTU session in Belize, he absented himself, but he sent OJ Ellington and Percy Lewis to see O in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. And I expressed to OJ Ellington, because he's a young attorney, and he tried coming with a narrative that I have heard before since 2008. That, oh, you know, there's some special clause that doesn't require the executive to take treaties to be ratified unless it involves something to do with land. And I told the brother, this is not the UK. Belize has a constitution. The UK does not have a constitution. They have a bunch of laws, you know, in Magna Carta and a bunch of other laws that they compile together. But they don't have a constitution. And yes, their executive has times when they can sign certain treaties, like OJ was alluding to, that do not need to go for ratification. But already, that's why part of my presentation was to read U61A2, where clearly it states that any treaty, especially a treaty for the settlement between Belize and Guatemala, must be taken to the Senate for ratification. So yes, we believe that they're gonna wait until the very last moment to rush it through the Senate, where it wouldn't have time to be debated. You see, our thing is calling for it to go there now, so that the discourse around the subject could be aired out in a republic. They have been calling off, and we don't have the money to pay one lawyer, which is the only reason we have not taken them to court as yet. And the PUP have been complicit all along in this, they have been led to the ICJ. So they're not gonna take them to court over the matter. But yes, we can, and we should, if we had the money for one lawyer. We would call right in front of your honor.
That kind of leads to my second question that I had. What practical steps can Belizeans abroad get behind and support? And whether it's fundraising to help BTP get the resources to fight this on our behalf? I think that's something that we could do. We, I personally, and my friend here, Ronald Fardwell, we are organizing our backyard fundraisers to try to get resources to support what the BTP has been doing and support peaceful Belizeans standing up and fighting against this situation. So are there any other things that Belizeans abroad can do, can get behind and support, practical things that we can do?
Yes, I'm here to make my personal appeal as one Belizean, not as the BPP party political leader. We live on the backdoor to reach the UN Security Council. All our research have told us that if you're not representing the government of the state, you need to pick it back for another state. So I am hoping against hope that some brother or sister in the diaspora might have one link to, let's say Ralph Gonzales. I love that brother from Saint Fitz Anthony Grenadine, sorry Ralph Gonzales. A brother like him would be able to listen to our presentation and understand that yes, the PUP and the UDP have been so engaged in the process of corruption that they have neglected foreign policy regarding this existential threat to Guatemala. And now the people need, as a group collectively, the Maya Leaders Association, the National Garifuna Council, Mesquite like me, you understand, the African Trail. All of we need to be represented and pick it back some nation to get to the UN Security Council with our position to say, please go back to the Sarsen Island and the Northern Portion of the Sarsen.
Perfectly, my last question to another member with the mic. We've all heard about Rigoberta Menchur. She's a famous Guatemalan that is a Nobel Peace Prize winner, and she represented the indigenous people of Guatemala. I know she has some connections here to Cal State LA. She did a presentation here at Cal State LA some years back that I attended. Has any group in Belize reached out to somebody like Rigoberta Menchur? Because I think this thing will always continue until the Guatemalan people themselves start telling their government and their military to leave Belize alone. And you brought up a very good point. If we can somehow get an audience with Rigoberta Menchur and tell them, no, your case is not with Belize. Your case is with England. So you don't have to ask your government to back off. You can tell them, target the right people and leave Belizeans in peace. So that's just a suggestion and a comment out there.
Well, I won't be hanging up the mic, but I just want to say you're absolutely right, my young brother. We must find a way to get people back to the table. They have managed to slip away from the table. And as long as they're not at the table, the issue of monetary compensation won't be on the table. We get, find our way to get back England to the table, and then the issue of monetary compensation will be back in the discourse.
Good day, guys. My name is Ansel West. I'd like to thank Mr. Mario for his comments. He was very interesting. I also like to thank the BPP, as well as Mr. Rogers and Parker Smith. I've met the fellow online, and he shares my sentiments in regards to various different occurrences and encroachments that's happening in Belize. Right? And I'm more off the wall in terms of ideas and ideologies, but I share the professor's outlook on how he should approach looking at or interests and approach it from the foreign powers, right? My thing is, I have one to add to the Sarsen incident that's occurring in terms of occupation. A lot of people are straying away from using the word occupation and using annexing and disputed area. But in reality of the situation, it is being occupied. And under the Geneva Convention, right? There's a stipulation that overpowers any treaties, any laws, or anything in regards to possession of property that gives Guatemala the right over the entire region if that is maintained. So our thing now is to figure out a way that we can regain or island and region. Because even by going to the UN Security Council, it would not matter based on the Geneva Convention laws. And that's something we should start looking at and have the government take care of. But that is not gonna happen. You know, my thing is, I was doing a lot of research, trying to figure out ways in which we could look at the government in their approach to dealing with these issues. Because my personal belief is, it's a treasonous act that's being displayed by the government of Belize. Because anybody with the knowledge and education and knows all the systems and treaties and so, know that this is an unfounded claim. Right? So the treason that is being occurred, I can't even find a law in Belize except for military that you could apply to someone creating treason against your government. Every single article or every single law that is associated with that is hidden from the general public. It's considered to be a secret law in terms of national security. But that's the outlook that I'm looking at. It's treason that's been committed, and I want to know what exactly is the government gaining by giving Belize away? We know about the Quetzal proposal. We know about various different encroachments from England and the United States in their inner dealings in regards to Belize. What is our avenue now? You know, and that's something we need to start to stop stray away from and stop looking at all these treaties and so, but figure out how. Because we are indigenous people to the region, have been war and with European powers for years. And the thing with slavery and all that, I don't believe in. We were indigenous to areas. If you look at the images at Lamanai and different various areas of the country, we have been there, and that's the same reason why they keep encroaching on us and doing all this injustice. If we look at Haiti, it's the same thing going on with Haiti. It's the same thing going on with Jamaica, right? It's Belize, the next Jamaica. You understand me? We are the richest country in the region, right? Or they call, they refer to us, all foreigners from the Caribbean refer to Belize as little America, because our dollar is so strong, you know? And we need to start emphasizing on these things and bring back our country to what it was. But first thing we have to do is deal with our leaders. Because they are doing treasonous acts to the people of Belize.
Please say your name.
My name is Dennis Delitt, I'm Belizean, 100%. And every Belizean in this would be very, very, very angry. There should be no laughing matter about the situation. I was in Belize for three months. A very disturbing thing happened. I mean, I know that Guatemala is taking over, but Mexico is also doing it. I had opportunity to go to Curazao. I wanted to go to the casino. And I was told that the border of Guatemala is now over. It's not over the bridge anymore. So that the border starts in our territory now. And another disturbing thing, that the drivers and the tourists can come into Belize City from Mexico. But the drivers and the tourist people from Belize, can I go to Mexico? It's a difficult one. Very disturbing. So Mexico is invading us. So our next border would be in Arroyo. We need a visa to go from Arroyo to Curazao. And with the Guatemala thing, as a YouTube. I remember Santa Stu might burn in the British flag. A lot of you wasn't born yet. But to go back in history, the British didn't do anything. They waited until they hit all of our love wood and our key clay and they kick up to the earth, they cannot stop us anymore. We have to quit drinking and partying and take this stuff. It's an urgency and togetherness that we need to come together. This is not no joke. We have to leave a legacy for our children. And we're not going here just taking down and arguing among ourselves and not picking up the baton to help the diaspora. What can we do to get the government, to pressure the government of Belize for the sins that they are doing to our people? For the advantages that they are taking for the people? So people cannot even afford a passport in Belize, an ID in Belize. Do you know the suffering that a lot of your brothers are having in Belize right now as we speak? Do you know? Can you feel them? As I travel the streets and the villages in Belize, my heart is so broken with tears. All I'm saying, Mr. Patrick, and gentlemen, and the destroyer of California, tell us what we must do, what we should do. And what is our duty to do so that we can leave a legacy for our future generation?
My name is Mike Gillette. And thank you very much for having this town here, town here today. It serves as a calling to awakening the Belizean community in various ways. My question now lies in the diaspora. And I know that you gentlemen have been long pursuing devoted. We are in a time of where the vote and the people that's being voted for in America has turned to a different level of change in multiple ways. In applying those things that we are seeing, and obviously our Belizean counterparts are also witnessing these changes that we are involved with here in the United States. The vote and the voting, how important is that vote for the diaspora? For those Belizeans outside of the diaspora to be able to contribute home while our monies are still being received in envelopes and shoeboxes on a present scale like never before while we are hearing? Billions are being miraculously disappearing. And then our contracts and our foreign disputes and the infrastructure have been left to wither like a zinc fence rusted. My question is, is there any advice to keep those people who have been waiting for the vote in lieu of those things that's changing right now?
Do you realize that, I'm not sure, some of you may be aware of the statistics as far as remittance of return? This is what we have on the books. So far this year for the fiscal year 2015, 2016, Belizeans in diaspora remitted 165 million US dollars towards Belize. That's about 5% of GDP. Just imagine, Belize doesn't have like a social network where, you know, like welfare system. So to answer brother Tillett's question, you know, there are a lot of Belizeans that are doing their part. And yes, more can be done. But the point I'm making is that we are doing a lot. And I don't know what would happen to that country without the remittance. And here is the upside of that, well, I should say the downside. They hate us. Seriously. They, I mean, they, there are forces. I had a guy, who is the editor of a newspaper, I might not say one. He actually went and did research, so he said to try to, don't pay the impact of the remittance on the GDP of that country. So you know, I mean, we, and we have nothing, we don't get anything in return. Under ROPA, which is the law for Belizean voting, if you have, voting is not our concern, because we have the right to vote. Technically, it's supposed to be one year of no missile, or one year living there, then you're able to vote. But you all know when the election, they go by the billion full. I've seen them, you know, so. So it's not really a force, but it's supposed to be one year before you can have the ability to vote by living in Belize. But Belizeans, when, you know, when elections time comes, we go and we vote. So we do have the right to vote. The issue that we have is that we don't have any rights. Particularly if you acquire your US citizenship after your 18th birthday. You're disqualified. Everyone in here who is a US citizenship after their 18th birthday essentially cannot run in Belize, general election, cannot be appointed to the Senate. But your children can. So if you have an American-born kid, then you go. Another Guatemalan who has a Belizean descendant, the same thing. Or any other foreigner has those exclusive rights, but we don't. So as a diaspora, we really need to put pressure on these people when you see they come here and talking all kind of crap in the same hall they come. They're not, they're not giving us a good ban for the kind of monies that we send back to that country. You know, they're still playing politics with it. So this is where the diaspora need to come together and let these people realize, stop playing PUB, UDP, because you're getting played. You need to put pressure on these people and say, look, when are you gonna give us our rights that you give every other citizen who was, who naturalized in Belize? Right now, you have second-class citizenship in Belize right now. That's a fact. It's a future of evidence. Okay? They want you to, they want you to renounce your citizenship to get involved in anybody politics. They want you to give up everything you've worked hard for in America, for all these years of social security, all that, you know, and give it up. But when the American man come, you know, or naturalizes, you know, you have nothing. But you do, you need to think about that. The diaspora need to, that's the rallying point where the diaspora need to. We are contributing, like I said, in the last, in the Prime Minister's voting speech of 2015, 2016, it's in little bit, in a little fine print, line eight of the last document. Look at the bottom line. They have it about $80 million, but it's more than that. The World Bank and I have it at 165 million US dollars at Belize. And that's, that's the official one. We're not talking about the new one, like when you send a box or a barrel, I don't matter no money. We talk about what they regard, you know what I'm saying? So it's 165 million US dollars. Do you realize what would happen to Belize if that's not there anymore? And I'm not saying it's just for the families, but okay, if you put your money in the bank, the bank can use that money to make loans, to, you know, to do other things. So it's, we are in fact an integral part of the development of Belize. Make no mistake about it. And we need to make our voice heard more effectively.
The response to that, I think that we Belizeans in the diaspora need to be more organized. Maybe cut across the cultural groups too. Doesn't matter if you have a very small group, prayer group. But find a way to like merge all these groups together and have a stronger. Another thing too, we are, most of us, some of us are citizens of the US. And you vote. You have a representative, right? You have a congressman, you have a Senate person. We need to start relating to those people so that we can put their shop in this on their table so they could also support us.
The first thing I wanted to do is correct something I heard earlier about Guatemala is not land law. Guatemala is not land law. They have acts, they do have access to the Atlantic and the Pacific. They just want access to our port. Another thing, anyway, another thing. We also, Dennis mentioned some of the social issues. One of the things that I found when I went to Belize last year several times, and I was there for the election, there are a lot of children not being registered after they're born because their parents cannot afford the registration fee. And when I'm corrected and told it's only $4, that $4 does make a difference if you have to pay the hospital bill and then get the recognition. So those are things that we out here can help with. I looked at your map, Hubert. And from what I'm seeing, where the cutoff is that Guatemala is demanding, it looks like where the Cebu River meets the sea, just above all Belize. I'm trying to figure out exactly where that goes. Because from all indications, everything that I've read to date suggests that we're going to, Guatemala wants full access to our port, unimpeded access. And what that tells me is that the Cebu River is not exactly the endpoint of what they want. Patrick, there are a lot of things that we can do. How much will it cost you in returning to go after the government to make sure to comply with the laws and a lot of the books? Because one of the things that we can do, we do have a fundraiser. Mario does have one coming up, I would be there. But I also think that most of us are doing well enough to give $25, $50, or $100 to get the ball rolling. Do you have an attorney in mind? And what kind of retainer do you need to get from him?
It's a style sign, I go wee wee, but beautifully. It took the time to fly down to Belize and got into the trenches in a direction time. So she know what it's all about down there. All I can say is that we do have a few attorneys that would, I would call them on friendly ear. But you all need to understand something. In the Kingdom of Belize, after the cabinet minister, the lawyers are like dukes and duchesses. They have no interest in changing a system where their status in the society is second to just about the governor general and the cabinet. So I'm sure that a ballpark figure, you'd be looking at just to lodge it, there would be a fee, and then it would be one hour waiting thereafter to go represent in front of your honor. But I believe we could get one deal with $5,000 Belize. I think we should be able to pull it off there. It took the first night, you know, and then we would see how much hours would be needed. But outside of that, brothers and sisters, since I'm on the mic before I sit down, the diaspora vote is something we take very seriously. Our chairman happens to be one, US citizen, brother Parker Smith, and so he owns US citizenship. Myself, as the political leader of the BTP, I can tell you, I have taken one complete reverse of position on this very issue. My siblings are at the back. I'm the only one living in Belize since my eldest sibling died. So I have come to the realization that you all are here for the very reasons my sibling that I love with all my heart and that I know love Belize the same way I do. But because of lack of opportunities, they had to come make their life over here. And so I can tell you, brother, I never come here to talk BPP. I came here to talk Belize. But if you all are serious about getting representation, it begins with you all right here doing what the professor alluded to. It's about our culture. It's not about ethnicity when we talk about the Belizean identity, that the liking of the rice and beans, or the punta music, or the rock drum. You know, that part for we make up that culture. So we need to understand that culturally, we have one over here that identifies with us back there. But back there, more than half of the new Belizeans, the naturalized Belizeans that came through refugee programs or through the economic citizenship program, they do not share culture. They are Belizeans, naturalized, they have every single right. They have more rights than you all have, as you alluded to. But they don't share a culture. And they're Guatemala, Mexico, it doesn't matter to them. They've got markets for them to be dealing with. So they're totally detached from the size of the issue. So I'm trying to say that you all would give me what I need. And I don't need it for me, but for those Belizeans like brother Hubert said, and rightfully so, were kind of, I don't use the word, hate. But certainly, some of them are where my psyche was at when I was a younger man. That one of the blame, the county that were in drainage, the tin cars were left the country, and so everybody were left down there now. I was there, I'm confessing, when I'm 32, but at 50 now, and after seeing how much we need you all to save Belize. We're gonna help in saving Belize. There's no way it could be denied anything, brothers and sisters. So I'm saying now may be the opportunity. It's not quick pro quo. And all I'm gonna have to do from where I'm standing to get the rights you're talking about. But I'm saying that today, while we're at this crossroads, if it's because of the diaspora we're able to save Belize, which I believe we can save, you know, that's why I'm here, brothers and sisters. Then it would be more an easy thing to make sure that not just voting rights, but being able to be honorable members of that house is open up to you all as well. And I give you that from my heart, my commitment to ensure that I'll be fighting for your rights. But I need enough to fight for Belize right now, regardless, red, blue, any color brother.
My frustration is the complacency of the Belizean people. You know, I'm here and I'm thinking that we're going through all this. We wanna do this, but if we don't have value from the people in Belize, what's the purpose? So what are you doing to educate people? For people to know that it's time to stand up and say something and do something?
The purpose of organizing this town meeting by the Breeder Organization is to empower the community and disseminate information. What you choose to do with the information, that's your responsibility. But we are providing an avenue to organize and bring speakers from Belize and other parts of the diaspora who can contribute to the public discussion as to the future of Belize. And so I think I'm hearing a lot of people asking a question with, what can the government do? You know, a long time ago, I made the conclusion that I don't ask that question anymore. We have to ask the question, what we are going to do? This idea that there's a group of people in a high place that have a monopoly on the knowledge and the ideas as where Belize should go, that's a myth. And we have contributed to that kind of culture in Belize. All of us here have a brain. All of us are here have the same taking ability. Let us come together and organize.
But I think that we could spread the word. And I'm inviting brother Hubert and brother Patrick to come to Northern California, so we could have a forum just like this. And if we, and if we are successful doing that, I suggest to them now, we go to New York, we go to Chicago, we go to, wherever there are Belizeans. Let's take this forum.
My name is Barbara Cloris, and I'm glad I come here today. I don't get too involved, I'm not on those side. But from what I'm listening, my thing is, first of all, I read the news. I read American news, I read all news. And it's upsetting to see what's going on in Belize. Because I remember when I was little, they were always fighting. they were always fighting, Guatemala was always fighting to get to Belize. But we, we always had maybe grandparents hiding from us. But it was peaceful, and since we got new government and everything, seems to me that the government is very weak. Because you read earlier that he write a piece for something, he was over here in New York, whatever he was doing while the children, the Guatemalan children were coming across the border to Belize. Manually clear, but I do read, and you could hear people complaining. Uh, my thing is, uh, we keep saying that we should all work together. But we're paying the government too, to work and protect the country. You raised, we raised this money here for you to get the law, you still gotta go to the premier or whoever he is to get consent, don't you? That's what I want to know, because if we are just doing it among ourselves, we among ourselves cannot keep them all, because we still have to go to the government for help. And to me, as far as I see, they're very weak. Me myself, I do not rub shoulders with none of them when they come here. Because you give them money, but they're not helping nobody in Belize. They come here and they see the system, and they learn the system, and they don't do nothing when they go to Belize. I can say it because I don't care, and I wrote the premier, I told him, I do not rub shoulders with you when they come here and give you no hundred dollars because I know it's going in your pocket and you're not helping the people in Belize. Now, I will go to fundraiser, but who is gonna be taking care of all this and make sure that this stuff is taken care of? I own a business, I own a small business, and thank God that I'm able to sustain myself. But it just pain my heart to see that, I've been here almost fifty years, but as I said, I keep reading, I keep saying I want to go to Belize, but every time I read, I see something is wrong, and it's scary. But I'm going this September, but who is gonna take care of this with this money business? Where is this money gonna go? Who gonna take care of it?
One of the things that can I say is that this Guatemala president took over and got elected by saying that he's going to take back Belize. Nobody can understand. Belizeans are rushing over to Guatemala to buy uniforms, we can't house it. Uh, sewing company, that's a great dollar in uniform that Guatemala is selling. So, another thing that gets me is Guatemala is claiming Belize, and we have a flag monument, and we fly Guatemala flag, like, I mean, like it's our flag. When I go to Guatemala to take any team and so on, Guatemala refuse to play on them. You know, they play half. I take a flag in my suitcase, that if they say they don't have a flag, I have a flag. So I raise my flag, I won't even raise it, I play my anthem, give me back my record, and give me back my hat. You know, one, another thing is that Guatemala sometimes say, we don't want no Belizean con amateur. No Belizean con amateur, but yet every day, both at schoolchildren come to Belize to go to school. Anytime they call, what do you call, want protest to make Belize a no good amateur. We should do the same thing, no children can con amateur, I mean, a Belize come to school. Why we encourage these people in the United Nations? And we have one government where I say, oh, we have friendly relation with Guatemala, friendly relation with Guatemala. Guatemala did take complex of a company, kill the people, we have to compromise them, we have to bear it. I believe because we killed somebody, then people come over, then they kill for we people, and no one can bear it. Why we tolerate Guatemala for the dirty things that we want, carry everything to the United Nations? I am totally against any, any CJ. When we go, when we go, the United Nations, and United Nations say, where this place neighbor called Belize? The man say we got eight hundred, six yards square miles of land, called Belize? We don't have to go to no court, no, but they wait where we border there. We know where we border there. So it's ridiculous to say, and then one man might get up, and one high ranking man might get up, and say we have our imaginary border. Thailand, Mexico, and Guatemala, and the United States, that they have our imaginary border. The only thing imaginary that for the animal, like, when they go and come and they feel like. But when something, you got to do something odd with this. I spent over fifty years supporting UDP. And when UDP started to change, I tell the prime minister, I say, man, no, retire, go change, I'm going to operate. And I start to support UDP. See, the thing happened, nothing different, we are the chair, we're the prime minister, we don't get no chair, man.
One of the things I want to, um, challenge myself and the panel and you too, because I don't have the answer right, is, um, the concept of a lobby. Can Belize, Belizeans have a lobby, a strong lobby? I'm not too sure how that work, but I am almost certain a strong lobby could do a lot of wonders. So if there's anybody out there perhaps who could help us, alright, to make our cause move forward with a strong lobby, lobby group, and want to work with that person or persons.
What are we doing to educate our young people to have civic pride so that we grow up? Learning about our sovereign thing? This has been absent for years, and we need to start now, but what are we doing to engage them?
Every time I stand up to do public speaking, I'm often reminded by who got me here. After raising up in our house where my brother is right here somewhere, the painter Goldson with Hawn and Tales because my dad was a UDP city councilor, I think the painting actually won first place in the tournament. But after meeting Mr. Goldson as one grown man and, and learning from the brother, I assure you that he knew what you were saying when he put in the Department of Patriotism. There's a difference between being one patriot and being nationalistic. Mr. Barrow is getting away with being nationalistic by nationalizing BTL and BEL. But we Belizeans haven't really accrued any benefit from BTL or BEL. The fact of the matter is, we need each of you all here today to look in the mirror and say, I know Belize, because you are. That is what I learned from Mr. Goldson, right, that you know Belize. You cannot stand by and watch injustice and keep your mouth on mute, because that's all that brother did all his life. He saw something was wrong, he called it as wrong, and you know, matter is, the Buckingham Palace or Washington DC, wrong the wrong. So the lead brother now at fifty, after investing eighteen years, have finally, I could say I could die tomorrow, I have lived my dream, I dared to dream that it's possible to build an alternative that is gonna serve Belizeans and not serve Elizabeth, that is the word, I'm not used to saying it that way. But our leaders all serve Queen Elizabeth. They have no interest in serving Belizean interest. So it's in Belizean interest to have Belizean in the diaspora vote back home. But it's not in their systems' interest, because there will be too much thinking, could become thinkers that would be allowed to vote. It's a lot easier to manipulate a system where eighty-five percent of the high school age kids are not in school. But yet you see who that the new UDP leader, the Minister of Education, that was being celebrated as doing a good job when he took fifty percent out of school to fifty-five percent out of school, the prime minister said, good job, you're the future of UDP. And sure enough, he is the future of UDP now. But I'm saying, all the need to save Belize now, all the need to write the congressman or, or, you know, the legislatures over here and put the case to them that the US cannot be selling arms to Guatemala because of the US buildup military down there. Well, recently, they switch and just make Israel sell them the arms, but you know, it's one of the same. So I'm saying that there's a lot that you all can do to maybe bring pressure on your legislatures over here to demand that the US put one check to Guatemala and aggression in the Sarsum and return our islands. If not, I'm not looking to America or England, brothers and sisters, I'm trying to find one back door to the UN Security Council herself. Because I know England is not my friend, and I know it's in America's interest to have the oil company get our oil to Guatemala and control the territory than to Belize, and we are a bunch of put up or let the fight from seventeen ninety-eight, you know?
And, uh, I wanted to make a couple points. The first one is regarding what Patrick said, um, or his suggestion of us taking this to the UNSC. I, I actually believe that taking it to the UNSC is the same as taking it to the ICJ. And let me just, I gotta read it off here so that I make my point clear. With regards to, it says here, one of the responsibility of the UN Security Council is, the Security Council recommends to the General Assembly the appointment of the Secretary General and the admission of new members to the United Nations. And together with the General Assembly, it elects the judges of the International Court of Justice. It is my belief that the UNSC will demonstrate what the collective thinking is of what the ICJ would rule. I don't know if that makes any sense to you, but the, the, the thing is, UNSC, they are the ones who put in place the judges that will sit on the panel of the ICJ. So like Hubert said earlier, for me, I think like monkey, hopefully, people come down. So, but that's one point I wanted to make. The next point that I wanted to make is that, um, we are at a critical time in our history, or a right, right time in our history. It is a time where we could unite as a people around this issue. And if we don't unite, we will definitely end up losing more of our identity as Belizeans. I, I, I want to say this, uh, the, um, the politics of Belize is really what has us at odds with each other. What Mr. Barrow and Mr. Brusenion, Chad Brusenion, and Patrick, and all these leaders of these respective body of house parties need to do is to find common ground for us to unite around this issue. There is no other way that we will be able to resolve it unless we unite and address it as one force. And the thing is about this is that the advocates for go to the ICJ are saying that we're damned if we don't go. And those who are saying that we don't want to go to the ICJ are saying that if we go, we're damned anyway. So this brings me to the final point that I want to make. Our military is over thirty years old. And they are, I spent about eight years in the military, I have a little idea of how the military, of what the military in Belize is capable of. And given the fact that they have some support, enough logistical support, to, they do have enough, um, men to man our waters while all of us are asleep. You know, and that includes Sarsum as well. The thing is that right now in Sarsum, we're already being occupied. Why wait to go to UNSC or ICJ to reclaim what has been taken away from us? That's a real thing, I know it's, it's a, it's a big pill to swallow, but the size, the size of the Sarsum or the area of the Sarsum is about two, for less than two percent of the, of the eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven square miles. And our military, they are able to occupy that area and might, and that, this is what they should do. That, that's the bottom line, or else if they don't do it, what do you think will happen? The Guatemalans will continue with what they're doing, and more and more they'll be occupying. And by the time we reach ICJ, if we do, or the UNSC, if we do, we, it brings us back to the point that Hubert made. They will be able to make a case because they've been occupying that area for all that time, and that, that will give them a leverage or enough evidence, or evidence for the want of the meta word, uh, to make a case when they go to war.
Yeah, brother Raymond, that's precisely what they're doing, building a case. Because see, the narrative is that we have an ironclad, an ironclad case, quote unquote. But yes, in theory, but Sir Eli Hoop Lattaput, he is one of the paid advisors, very highly paid, distinguished jurors, international jurors. Matter of fact, he used to sit on the ICJ court, he was one of the one that, if you see the legal opinion at the, um, the MFA, the Minister of Foreign Affairs, he was, he's one of the one that helped write the, uh, that thing. He came back with a, with a adendum in two thousand and Belize seven, in which he himself said that, um, his opinion is not fresh anymore because of the geographic, geographical realities, I'm paraphrasing, that's occurring in Belize right now. So essentially, he was, he was arguing that, look, what I wrote in two thousand, and I was highly paid for, I'm coming back to tell you that, hmm, I'm so sure you more, that's Sir Eli Hoop Lattaput. So, and that did not include what's occurring as we speak in the Sarsum, so that's kind of scary. So we need to get away from this narrative that we have this ironclad case, because we don't, we do not have an ironclad case. At best, we have a case whereby if we go to the ICJ, I believe that we, that Guatemala, that walk away empty handed.
I'm Bill Flores of Garrett Vision, we inform everyone the people of issues that affects us. Um, this is really concerning to me, uh, this issue with Guatemala. Because the land that Guatemala is claiming, or the land that they're looking at, also includes Garifuna preserves. These are land that are, that are designated for Garifuna use. And if Guatemala gets their wish, then we will have lose that land. Uh, first thing, when this first came out, uh, the government, the governor, governor general of Belize made a statement. And he instructed and informed Belizeans not to access the area of Sarsum. That was what he told, and I was, I, I, and I was saying, if this is my country, why can I go there? And, but this is what the Queen's representative said, this is what they think. And furthermore, then I read, I read again, where our, um, foreign minister say that there is no issue and that we can go to Sarsum whenever we want to, but as you gentlemen have stated that, that's not easily done. Now, my issue, uh, with Belize and what they're doing is that, is that first, for us to do something, us in Belize, we have to be united. We have to have one Belize, and we have to cut this racism out between Garifuna and Creole people. If we do that, we'll, we'll have, we will unite and we'll respond, because they are spreading numbers. Now, um, my question is, how foreign minister said that we can access Sarsum, is it safe to access this area?
Yes, it is, because like I told you, it's a very cagey little kind of tightrope that Guatemala is walking. Because see, they say they own it, it's part of the, like Patrick was saying, they saying the river now belongs to them as part of this. What was the thing they did, they said, call them, these are national waters now. So, but they cannot use deadly force, because it was mess, it would mess up their little game that they're trying to play. But if they can intimidate you enough to back down, and that's what they want, then you do it. But if you insist, and trust me, I'm going back, I'm insisting, I'll let you guys know on the turn up. If you insist, they will let you go through. Because they don't want to have an international, where they're killing Belizeans innocent, I go there just like this, I have no
I go here just like this, I don't have no weapons, you know, I'm not armed. So, if you're gonna aggress me for stepping in my backyard, then you have an issue. So, it's a very, very cagey little game that they're playing to try to, to, you know, they will intimidate you, but it's up to you if you wanna back down. But if you have a bunch of brave brothers like Patrick and Parker, a bunch of people go to, go to the, want, go on expedition. Mario Lara is planning an expedition, that's the brother idea, anybody who wanna get involved in, go talk to him. Yeah, he's, he's trying a peaceful, you know, I mean, to try to, to go there, so I mean, it's, you wanna, here's your chance to, to visit. Mario is doing something about it.
Uh, audience, we will be signing off on the live streaming. But for those of you who want to continue the discussion, you can do so. Uh, we would like to thank our panelists, Mr. Patrick Rogers for coming all the way from Belize to share this valuable information with the Belizean diaspora, to brother Hubert Pipersburg, and to Professor Egbert Higginio for participating. Give them a big round of applause. And also, thank you, the audience, for coming out and participating in this fellow talking. Please, before you leave, we have about sixty-five people that came here. We have thirty people who sign, uh, on the back. Before you leave, can you please just sign your information so we can keep you informed as to what is coming down the road? And follow us on Facebook through the Belizean Diaspora page forum. Thank you very much.